Let's call this work session to order. We have two main items we want to address today. One, we have a budget presentation and taking action on the budget. And then we have some personnel matters that we also want to take action on today. So let's proceed and we will begin with the discussion on the budget presentation. Dr. Boone?
Good afternoon, well evening now, Mr. Jordan, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. As Ms. Ingram approaches the podium, we're here now to ask the board to adopt its final education plan and budget for the fiscal '18 school year. On May 23rd, the city council adopted this budget allocating an additional $6 million to Norfolk Public Schools. Three million of that is recurring, three million of that represents one-time funds. As a result of the difference between the budget submitted by the board to council and the actual additional revenue, we needed to reconcile what was going on with the budget. At the last board meeting, we provided the board a summary of what those revenue differences look like. And tonight, Ms. Ingram was going to walk us through quickly where we've been from the superintendent's proposed budget to where we are now, as well as the board then discussing his recommendations. We made recommendations to the board on how to balance the budget from there. So, Ms. Ingram?
Evening, Mr. Jordan, and Dr. Gabriel, school board members. I'll be going, like Dr. Boone said, briefly over the changes. What is what we sent to you Friday afternoon is the same information, but what I'll be going over with you today is we wanted to show you the progression from the superintendent's proposed budget to the adjustments that were made to the school board. So on the page that was at your desk, the first column is showing the school board's approved budget for the current year. So this is our current year budget in the first column. The next column is the superintendent's budget that was presented to you on March the first, yes, March the first. And then the next column is adjustment to the superintendent's proposed budget. If you remember during that time, the joint assembly approved the budget between the time that Dr. Boone presented to you and you were taking action on your own budget. So that represents the adjustment in revenue from the joint assembly's budget. And then at that time as well, the school board took actions and made some adjustments and added it back to their budget. So in the green column is what the school board had proposed and submitted to city council. After city council made its adjustments and appropriation, we then had to come back and balance the budget to with $3.9 million. And we submitted to you, that's at the bottom of that, showing you how we got down to balancing the budget. And then the, sorry, the red column or the pink column shows you what the budget will be with all the amendments that we had, we are proposing, which aligns to the money that has been appropriated by city council. I don't know whether you want me to actually read the different items, but that is, the items are the same.
Anyone need any further clarification on the chart that's before you, or any questions for Ms. Ingram?
Related to the numbers or related to the balancing strategies below? Are we talking about that right now?
Right now, on the, on the chart itself, in terms of the, the numbers. So I think what, in terms of the issue that Ms. Bassin just raised as far as the balancing strategies, that the best course of action for us then would to see if there's a motion that member of the board would like to bring forward related to the recommendation that we have. If we get a motion to second, then we can have discussion on balancing strategies or anything else that the board would like to have. Then following that discussion, then we can take, take action accordingly. Is everyone okay with that? Okay. Ms. Doyle?
So I move that we today, I move that we adopt the school board's proposed adjusted budget as proposed for June 7th, operating budget that gets us to $325,292,145.
You have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay. Discussion now. Ms. Bassin?
So can you clarify, clarify the reduction for the pay and comp, the salary study, and the potential, is the suggestion to phase in the seven in-school suspension positions or are we going to discuss whether we do the part-time elementary, the part-time funding at elementary or can you, can you elaborate on that piece?
I'll start with the IAS in-school suspension and ask Ms. Ingram to also support the pay and comp piece. We threw some conversations with board members and staff and others since we learned that we absolutely would not be getting $10 million. And so what were some strategies? So the thought is about, was there an opportunity to phase in, what would it cost us to phase in some positions moving toward additional in-school suspension positions in FY '19? So when we, the, the part of the, the funding for the in-school suspension was going to include the small dollars, just a couple of hundred thousand dollars that we currently have in the budget that allows schools to employ a person part-time periodically to serve in-school suspension. We could hire, the district could hire seven in-school suspension assistants for that, leaving the other schools with, without the part-time dollars. Or we could continue for one additional year, the part-time implementation of in-school suspension and then work toward that implementation in FY '19. So it truly, that, that, that's an option, as all of them are options, but that's one for discussion. One of the things too, as, as we think about the, when we approached balancing this budget, there were two growth areas in the original budget, pay and comp and in-school suspension. And so that's why they both reappear on the budget balancing strategies because of the work that had been done there. With the pay and comp, as we've gone through and started the, the work on adjusting the scales and what the value is between steps and dealing, accounting for attrition and certain things, retirements and resignations, we saw that as an opportunity where we could still get movement and, and try to balance the budget. You want to add to that, Ms. Ingram?
Yes. We completed the 30-step scale, which was part of the Phase One implementation. And then we started the process of moving everyone onto the new scale, making sure that no one lost money and they were placed. In doing that first phase, we felt like we could accomplish that with $4 million and still meet Phase One. And then Phase Two will be trying to decompress or place people accordingly. On that range, people are still moving because in order to ensure that they do not lose money, they still have to go up a step. And some of them went up multiple steps. And we are still ironing out the final details of that. So Phase One can be accomplished with $4 million. And we needed to balance the budget. I think the first time, we had $800,000 that we were still not balanced. So that was a place we could balance the budget and still accomplish the in-school suspension phase-in piece as well.
What, Dr. Robinson?
I wanted to address the in-school suspension.
Okay, so can I get, okay, Ms. Doyle?
Just a quick question on the pay and comp. Are we still going to phase it in then over four years or is it now going to be five years?
No, it's, it's still looking to four.
Okay.
But we, in, in getting in there and, and working on this salary schedules, working on the, creating the 30 steps and the value of that, we saw some opportunity that because we see people moving in that process, no one is losing. So that gave us our first level of movement. But we believe we can still accomplish it.
In four?
In four.
Okay. This being year one, Phase One?
Yes.
Okay.
Dr. Robinson?
My question about the in-school suspension and the allocation of the, of whatever dollars that the budget allows for, I guess the, the question is, is it more cost-effective and get more bang for our buck if we put it in a secondary school versus an elementary school?
Secondary schools, well, secondary schools have some options too. They do have detention, Saturday school. Elementary schools tend not to have any of that. And so secondary schools too have students who have, need longer placements such as Madison and other things for more serious infractions. We have ACES at crossroads, but we're limited in how many students we can serve. It's not optimal either way, but I, because secondary has some things in place, I would see this, this is elementary money. They are the ones with the part-time position, so that's why we were thinking about it also being at elementary.
Okay, so even if we, if you decided to allocate the money for seven?
More than likely, they would be at elementary.
Still be at elementary, okay.
That would be our.
Because in my observation, it would seem like allocating in-school suspension dollars for many of the middle schools or, and/or high schools as possible would alleviate some of the steps getting to the more severe.
But because they have some, some options in between?
But is it working?
Well, that's, that's also part of our summer discussion about the ongoing work around.
Again, that's a discussion I'm, I'm bringing up and maybe then just need to wait for the summertime, but.
But.
I would, I would advocate taking that, any monies for in-school suspension and putting it at the secondary level. But again, I'd yield to your, your decision.
Well, and I'll ask Dr. Boone a question, I think is, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the discussion we've had as a board around supporting climate and challenges at certain buildings, that the idea was that this would provide the administration some flexibility to provide that support at the schools where we've heard that they would like to have some additional options for, for children. And I imagine that the elementary school level is part of that consideration.
Oh, absolutely. And be, and, and like you said, the way in which we've been supporting elementary schools is this allocation for some part-time dollars to, to be able to accomplish that. And so the challenge becomes if we do seven, then we don't have any part-time dollars for any of the other schools. But if we stay with the part-time, we defer anybody getting new ISS until the next fiscal year.
Oh, okay. So it would be to maintain the current programs that?
That's correct.
Okay, so not, not new. All right.
Dr. Gabriel?
So in asking, in dealing with the ISS, I, I thought it was explained to me at one point in time during the budget discussion that if we didn't do it for an entire group, whether it was elementary, middle or high school, that there might be inequity about what we're doing at some schools versus at other schools. So that's not the case then?
I, I don't recall that discussion, but the answer to that is yes, it will be inequitable because there are some schools that will have and some that wouldn't. Absolutely. And so that's, that's the challenge between maintaining the part-time opportunities we have for elementary schools currently or dedicating the funds to seven schools.
Okay. So, so do the programs, when you assess the need of where we would put such programs, are the ones where we currently have them, the ones that would be part of that seven or?
Again, everybody only has part-time.
Right.
And so we would be looking to establish seven full-time in-school suspension assistants at seven schools. But it would mean that those, because in the original, bringing on 44, 45 positions, that original idea was that each school received one. Okay? Because we aren't there, then 34 schools, 37 schools won't have, still won't have anything even if we go with the seven.
But isn't that, because you, the word was used inequitable. My sense was that you were trying to begin a phase in using the equity lens so that with the 44, 45, we had the resources, everybody would have received one, but we've all had discussions that not all buildings are the same.
That's right.
So the idea is if you do the phase in, you would still try to do it through an equity lens, so you're not, you're trying to phase in where it's needed most and then continuing to phase in until as our resources allow.
Absolutely. That would, that would be the process and the practice. Seven won't get us to our schools with the greatest need though. That, that's the challenge.
Okay. Won't get to all of them, you're saying?
Won't, that's right. Not, not talking about the 44 total, but we would have more than seven schools we want to initially at the elementary level place.
Okay. Anything else on that piece?
I guess, so I guess my question around that is, you know, I was struggling with that piece because we know it's salaries hugely important, but climate and the learning environment is also important. And while philosophically, we'll, we'll have that conversation about suspension and in-school suspension, you know, in months to come, currently, do we, do we jeopardize part of, I shouldn't say jeopardize, but you know, I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure out how much focus do we put on salary and the in-school suspension piece?
Well, we have to pay for it.
Right.
And because it is not a purchase program, we're, we're then seeking to put people into positions, whether part-time or full-time. So salary, the, the money to affect those humans, those, that human capital to be able to implement pay and comp, I meant, excuse me, ISS, I'm sorry, ISS, is, is exactly the conversation that we're having. It is about, do we continue with schools being able to bring in someone part-time or do we take those funds to hire the first seven with the goal of hopefully 37 more next year?
No, I was just, okay, you, you had some, Ms. Bassin, you had some other questions or comments or was that?
No, right, right now, that's it.
Okay. Dr. Gabriel?
I have a, a summarizing comment, and if we're not there yet, that's fine. I just need to know when I'm, I can make that summarizing comment.
Before the vote or after the vote?
Yeah, I'm not sure what.
Before, since we're having the discussion.
Well, you can summarize at the time of the vote if, if that works for you.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments on the motion that's before us and the information that's before us attached to the motion? All right, well, hearing that, let's call for the vote then. Ms. Banks?
Thank you. Ms. Bassin?
Nay.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Nay. And if I may, I have expressed my thoughts to all of you, including Dr. Boone. You all know how I feel about our resource teachers. I know that we are very proud that we can initiate this pay and comp study and we tried to do more with this budget. And I'm very grateful for the city council to the six million that they were able to give us. I do feel that more is needed for our students. We have great challenges in the division, but I do see that we have great success in our future. And I will stand with each and every one of you with this budget as we move forward, but I have to vote nay at this point.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner? Mr. Jordan?
So I, I accept Dr. Gabriel's comments and also from conversations with Ms. Bassin, I understand the basis for, for her decision. I'd just like to say that getting the six million in this environment was tough. We, we, if you recall, the original conversation from council or at least from the manager's office was zero. We started with the amount that you see before you that the superintendent recommended. Came back with ours and it's, it was a lot of effort thanks to the public, in addition to individual board members to get us on a trajectory where we are now. Also, as we've discussed with the city manager, the mayor and the vice mayor, kickstarting as soon as we can, the discussion around formula or formula if it turns out to be that, to really begin to address sustainable funding that meets our needs. So I vote aye, and, but I also say for us to get ready because it's going to be a lot of hard work, both in joint conversations with the council and in many other conversations as we address the long-term sustainability of the needs to, you know, for, for our children. So I vote aye. And so the motion carries. Dr. Boone?
And I know we have to do the all funds piece and I have that page for you, but one of the comments, I, I share in all the comments around the disappointments of the decisions we've had to recommend to the board and the decisions we've had to take in order to balance these funds. And I too am appreciate, appreciative from council of $6 million. But I remind the board that the six, three recurring, three one-time. So we begin FY '19 with a $3 million deficit again. And Mr. Jordan's comments about what's the work we do with council going forward, we have to get out of, and I've been very publicly, very public about these statements, that the city is helping us perpetuate structural imbalances. The resource piece, positions, I understand all of that, but that was one of the structural imbalances we had to address. The city has got to help us so that we aren't continuing to perpetuate structural imbalances because these one-time funds in an organization that generally does not have one-time opportun, expenses and opportunities is just kicking the can down the road. The other piece, as we, you know, I, I thank the board for his vote, which will allow us to begin to, to offer contracts to our outstanding employees. Please don't lose sight of not only the, the conversations going forward with council, but we're facing some very, very turbulent waters as it relates to the federal dollars. And we need the board to, to stay cognizant of that. We need our employees to understand that and we need the community and the public at large to understand that if some of what is proposed in the K-12 education budget out of the White House occurs, we'll be back at this table potentially during the fiscal year, during the school year, to figure out how we keep ourselves whole. We shared with the board that if we lose Impact Eight, which is one of the areas scheduled to be zeroed out, that's $3.2 million in the budget that you just adopted. And we would lose that. And because the federal fiscal year is October 1st to September 30th, school will already be open. So these are the things that, that we've got to stay closely in tune to. We've got to stay closely connected around what are the tough decisions that we may face? And also what is the advocacy that we put in place to let everyone know what the impacts will be? I had the opportunity to meet with one of the Republican candidates for governor last week with a team of superintendents, talking with staff of the congressional delegation. We, we get it, but change is coming. The question is, how deep will the changes be? And, and we know even as we, at June 21st, we will talk about our consolidated application for federal funds, which is titles one, two and three. And when we present that to the board, we're going to show where we're already building those budgets on, bless you, on anticipated reductions that we know about. And the best crystal balls that we're using collectively in K-12 education, our budget discussions are far from over. And we know what we need, we know what we're trying to accomplish. We have to stay connected so that we can get there because there's more storm coming. And when you're dealing with loss of funds at the federal level, the state level and limited growth at the local level, we're in a tough, sustainable position as a school district, beyond alone, but in this region, we're the highest recipient of federal dollars. And because of that, the impact will be felt even greater for us than perhaps some of our neighboring districts. So I end with the adoption of this budget the same way I began on March 1st. There's as much unknown as known.
Ms. Wagner, you have something, because we're going to.
I do. And I, I'm listening to both and I understand and I've really taken into consideration what you're saying and you're certainly right in terms of the comments, but I certainly don't want to, my hesitation was because of the transportation piece, which has to, to me has to do with safety of children. Pay and comp is something that we need, but I still want us to, I will do it, but take into consideration the safety of what happens with those kids as they have to walk through that, that underpass during that time of inclement weather.
Point taken. Ms. Ingram, you have another chart for us?
Yes. On the second chart is a summary of all funds, which we have the operating budget, which you just approved of $325,292,145. Grants and other funds, $35 million, see, $22,017. School nutrition services fund, $19,200,000. And our capital improvements project, school maintenance of $2 million. The grants and other funds, school nutrition funds and capital improvement funds, we have received the ordinances from the council and this aligns with that. So the total funds for the district for 2017 and 2018 is $381,514,162. So we're requesting a vote aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Do we have, to have a motion on the floor?
I was going to.
I'm not going to.
I'm sorry?
I have no motion.
Okay. Is there a motion for us to adopt the total all funds budget as presented?
I move that we adopt the proposed budget summary, all funds for $381,514,162 as proposed today, June 7th, for the FY '17, '18, again, all funds.
You have a second? Moved by Ms. Doyle, seconded by Reverend Haywood. Additional discussion or discussion on this motion? Dr. Robinson?
I can't support this motion. The $2 million cut, this, we have to send a message back to the city council. The $2 million cut is, is, for the facilities is just untenable. We, we need $10 million a year to keep up with what we have building-wise and they're cutting us in half. That's, that's cutting a nose off to spite our face and that's, and though it's, it's outside of our hands, but this is a message that we need to send back.
All right. Additional discussion?
May I make a proposed amendment then?
I mean, let's get with any other discussion because I need to understand the consequences of what's being considered.
I, I'm in, I'm in agreement with Dr. Robinson.
So what we currently have on the floor is a motion to adopt all funds, which includes the grants, the school nutrition services fund and the capital improvement project, school maintenance. So far, I've heard Dr. Robinson raise concerns and objections.
So far, I've heard Dr. Robinson raise concerns and objections about the capital improvement piece, also Ms. Bassin. So this, and I understand it, I'm coming to you. But Ms. Ingram, so I want to understand our process and, let's say Attorney Cloud did stay, and what the legal ramifications are of if there's a motion that comes forward that adjusts any, well, in particular, the capital improvement piece because I know that there's been resolutions passed by council associated with that. The other three, well, one we've already adopted and the other two seem to be all within our purview. Is that correct?
They've given us the appropriation of two million dollars. That's what they've given us. So you don't want it and don't spend it. And you can still go back and ask for more. But at this point, the, their ordinance have given us two million dollars to spend.
Dr. Boone?
My suggestion would be to adopt it and ask the board chair to pen a letter to the mayor, the city manager, and the council regarding our concerns with the limited capital dollars and our intent to come to them in the coming weeks and months to discuss perhaps additional support for capital improvement projects.
So everybody understand what we've discussed thus far? Okay, so Dr. Gabriel?
Oh, well, based upon Dr. Boone's recommendation, I was going to say, would it be wise for us to make an amendment to just take that out of what we have proposed to us? But based on her recommendations and your feedback, then I would just say we keep it whole.
And suggest that we pen a letter post the adoption of the budget.
Others have any thoughts on that action?
I would have to go along with the latter.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with that.
Okay. So, so we have a motion to second on the floor as proposed. Is there any further discussion on the motion for all funds? Hearing none, Ms. Banks, if you call the roll, please.
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood? Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Okay, we have three other matters. There's a personnel report, do I have a motion for us to approve the personnel report?
I move that we adopt, I move that we adopt the personnel report as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the personnel report? Hearing none, Ms. Banks, if you call the roll, please.
Thank you. Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Supplemental personnel report one, do I have a motion to approve?
I move that we adopt supplemental one as presented this evening.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Moved by Ms. Doyle, seconded by Ms. Bassin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Banks, if you call the roll, please.
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Nay.
Reverend Haywood? Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner? Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Supplemental personal report, personnel report two, motion to approve?
I move that we adopt personnel supplemental docket number two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Doyle, seconded by Dr. Robinson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Banks, if you call the roll?
Thank you. Ms. Bassin?
Nay.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood? Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Nay.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Lastly, we have our June twenty-first meeting coming up. We'll have updated agenda and information coming out by Friday. Some materials already have received. We have graduations coming up. Good time to celebrate student achievement. I know that Ms. Banks has asked for us to confirm our availability for that. With that, if there's nothing else anyone has at this time, I would ask that we adjourn. Anything else? All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.